Welcome, everybody, to the September 8th special meeting. Let the record read that the entire town council minus Keith are present. And now we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Under God.
Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Justice for all. And God bless America. All righty. For the only item on the agenda, which is elect town council vice president, I'm gonna turn this over to the current vice president, Derek Favre. Mr. Vice President?
I thank you, Mayor. Were we gonna go to a special session? I mean, go to a closed session or no?
No, no.
Okay. All right, so as I made the announcement in our last meeting, my time on council was gonna run short due to my pending relocation. That's very close. In fact, I will be relocating next week. So this will be my last meeting on council. So obviously, we have a number of tasks, but the one task in particular is to nominate a new vice president. But before I make a motion, I just want to say I want to thank you all for allowing me to serve in this role, albeit much shorter than I had anticipated. But that's, you know, some things you can't predict, and I never would have predicted this. But I do want to thank you for allowing me to do that. You guys are fabulous to work with, both on council, on staff, our volunteers, everybody. You guys have been fabulous, and you really made this a very enjoyable term and a partial second term for me. No matter who we select tonight, I do hope as many of you on council get the opportunity to serve in this role before you hang up your cleats, so to speak. Two of us have served as the council vice president so far. And the four of you who are remaining, all of you would make fantastic council vice presidents. So I hope each of you, however long you serve on council, I hope each of you get the opportunity to do so at whatever interval that you all choose. You know, when we did this in December, I made the statement that I was certainly in favor of a shorter term to share the wealth, so to speak. And I believe that as well. Obviously, that'll be up to you guys, how you want to do that moving forward. But I stand by that, and I hope you all consider that again, just so as many of you get the opportunity to this term and/or future terms to be able to do this. So with that said, I do want to make a motion to name Councilman Jaworski as council vice president.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second? Now, okay, I'll begin a short discussion with the maker of the motion, still Vice President Derek Favre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, my suggestion tonight is no indication of anyone else. But I think, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with Larry a lot, as with the rest of you. And I think that Larry and I share a lot of the same ideals and goals in particular. There were some things that I was certainly hoping to have the opportunity to do in this role. And obviously, I won't be able to do so, but I would like to see Larry try to do that as well. He and I have talked a number of times on just general leadership and collaboration. And I just think that to finish whatever remaining of my term, I would like to give Larry that opportunity and then allow, again, allow someone else to take over after him. So that's my reasoning for the motion for Councilman Jaworski tonight.
Thank you, sir. I'll move to Greg.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. I would certainly like the opportunity to serve as vice president for a year. I know we've had this discussion before with the Norway North Beach setup. And I'm not saying in perpetuity, let's handle it that way. But it is a personal enrichment thing. I have no idea if I'm gonna serve beyond this current term. And I don't object to Larry being voted in as council vice president for the remaining of this term on his motion. I believe that was the motion. But again, I would like the opportunity to serve just for a year, just for personal enrichment. It would be a cool thing to be able to say that he did. So my comments so far, I guess.
Thank you, sir. I'll move to Larry.
Thank you very much, Derek. I appreciate the honor to potentially serve in your place. Look forward to carrying forward a lot of your initiatives and hope that I can conduct business in the same very efficient manner that you did. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
I don't have much to add. I support Larry. I like what Greg said, and it's been echoed, I think, by Derek as well, that it would be nice to spread the work around a little bit. But Larry certainly is qualified, and I support the nomination.
Thank you. And lastly, Valerie?
Oh, yeah, my comments is when it comes to, both of them are fine gentlemen. Both could do a great job. When it comes to reaching out, the only person that reached out to me was Greg to show an interest. So I can understand his desire to do this. And although I recognize Derek's interest, it really is, in my opinion, the five of us that will have to take this town council forward. And so I will support either of these gentlemen. I think they'll do a fine job. I like the idea of allowing Greg an opportunity eventually, if not this year, possibly next year. And I do hope that we'll have the same sort of collaboration with whoever's vice president, as we had with Derek and with how he reached out. And so I will support. Are we actually allowed to vote in a work session?
This is not a work session.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that. I mean, I'm grateful that Greg had a conversation with me, showed interest, explained what his vision was. And since I haven't heard from Larry, I look forward to hearing what his vision is. Besides what he expressed at this meeting. And so I'll leave it there.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. What are we voting on? I'm sorry, is it for to continue this?
We're voting, okay, this should be very simple. We're voting to, if you choose, to elect Larry Jaworski the council vice president. That's what we're voting on.
For the remaining of this term? Is that for the next three years?
No, he's just the vice president. You could vote next month to elect a new one if you want it. This is pretty simple.
Okay.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay, did I get everybody opposed? So was that a four to one vote? I struggle in these virtual meetings sometimes. Somebody help me.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm probably making it a little difficult, Mr. Mayor. As long as I can have an opportunity to serve one of the upcoming years, I'm fine however it shapes up. And I'm fine with Larry jumping right in.
Okay, I'm gonna start over again, guys. All in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something before we take the vote? So my motion was not to put a term on it, again, as we discussed last year. And what I mentioned tonight, you know, there's no set term on the length. My motion was for Larry to succeed me in the current position. But it's really up to you guys, whatever interval you would like moving forward, to nominate new vice presidents. And I hope you all, as I said, you all get the opportunity to do so. So this isn't a set time.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Well, we have, okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. And we could certainly make an amendment if you so choose.
That the term for the vice president for this remainder?
I can hardly hear you, so it would be nice if you spoke into your speaker so I could hear your motion.
Sure. The motion is to make the vice presidency for the remainder of this term be one-year increments that would provide the opportunity for the other members to have an opportunity also. So that's my motion is to have this.
It sounds like, to make it simpler, what you're trying to do with your motion is say not to exceed one year?
Yeah.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we have an amendment. Now, is there a second to the amendment?
I second that.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I would just like to add that I can't speak for Keith. I certainly won't speak for Larry either. And the way this could pan out, Larry could end up being vice president for three of the four final years. If, I just want to make sure that, and of course, I would need to get voted in. It would be pending a vote by my colleagues, but I would like to have opportunity for one year. That's it.
So, yeah. And Councilman Morris, if I could, I understand what you're saying. And I actually, now that I think about it, I don't think that the amendment is required. I think that you guys might be at a point where you say, you know, we just want to keep Larry for two years. You know, I'm not sure you want to hamstring yourself, because we can certainly take this up one year from now, with or without an amendment. So I would probably say move forward as is. That's just my, you know, experience speaking. Any other discussion?
I'm good with that. I certainly would be subjected to being voted in by my colleague. So that wouldn't be a shoe-in anyway, so I'm fine.
Right. So I guess then, before we vote, are you okay with that, Valerie? Would you like to retract your amendment, or you want to move forward with it? It's your call.
I'll move forward with it.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Is that three?
That was five.
Aye from me.
Five, five zero.
Okay, very well. Okay, very good. Okay, so we have a motion, we have an amendment. Now, so we'll vote on the amended motion. All in favor, say aye. Very good. Okay, it passes. We have a new vice president. Congratulations, Vice President Jaworski. I'll give you a little hand there. There we go. All right. So this meeting is over. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the ayes have it. Okay, we can move on to the regular meeting. Let me get a drink of water here. Welcome, everybody, to the September 8th work session agenda. Let the record read that the entire council minus Councilmen Partick are present. And well, do the pledge of allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
God bless America. And thank you, Holly, for all you did on the 9/11 remembrance stuff that's going on Saturday. So, okay, first.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to note what I feel is a glaring omission from our agenda for tonight. And that is absolutely no recognition that this is your birthday. Happy birthday, buddy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I could think of nothing better than to be at a town council work session on my birthday.
Hey, we had a council meeting on my birthday.
Both fingers crossed. Yeah, we did it on your birthday, too. Yeah, I know.
That sentiment is why you're the mayor.
You know, thank you, sir. You know, it's funny that, you know, I'm not sure if folks, you know, realize how many special events and occasions that the seven of us, you know, give up over a four-year period, you know, be it anniversaries or birthdays or St. Patrick's Day, or, you know, this, that, or the other. But, you know, we do. So I guess that's just what we do. And thank you, everybody. So first item would be the moratorium. I'm gonna let Chris and then Todd, you know, weigh in for the council. I'll start with Chris.
Okay, thank you, and happy birthday, Mr. Mayor. We have a moratorium in place that will, it's a nine-month temporary moratorium that will be over on December 18th. The planning commission has just completed its draft plan for the public hearing and set the public hearing date for November 9th. A 60-day period is required. That's why it's 60 days from this week. I think that once the hearing is completed, it's likely that the planning commission may need three months of work in order to absorb the comments from the community and make revisions. It may not require three months, but it very well may. So if we carve out three months for that, that takes the planning commission's work through February of 2022. Now, the moratorium will have expired two months before that. So it's possible that, beginning in January, the planning commission will begin taking up the development applications that are on file with the town clerk. And there are five of them now. The planning commission may receive more before then. It's not likely that any planning commission could process that many development plans at once. But it's conceivable the planning commission could take two at a time. And it's likely that each one would take three months, just based on recent experience, three months of meetings before a preliminary approval is given. Which is to say that if applications are addressed beginning in January, by March, the planning commission may be in a position to approve or deny, you know, but certainly act on a development proposal, perhaps one of the five that have already been submitted, or perhaps others. Each of the five development proposals that are on file with the town are not consistent with the current public hearing draft of the plan. So the planning commission would have to operate under the current plan and certainly the current regulations, the current zoning ordinance. To be fair, property owners have to adhere to the law as it exists at the time they're having their permits heard. So it's conceivable the planning commission may find itself in a position to approve an application that otherwise would be opposed to, or would otherwise find inconsistent with its draft plan. Which is to say that you have a decision before you about extending the moratorium. And I did a brief memo for you last week, and it laid out a few options that you might want to consider. One would be no extension. Allow the chips to fall where they may. You already gave a nine-month moratorium. And I think I've just laid out the implications of that, right? The other option is to extend it for three months. Why do I say three months? Because three months takes it up to a year. And just in my experience in looking at moratoriums, typically, I understand that they're frowned upon if they extend beyond one year. Now, Todd can offer his opinions and guidance to you about that. But generally, a moratorium that extends beyond one year might be problematic in the sense that it imposes a burden that continues for a property owner. The other option is to extend the moratorium for some time, for certain parts of the town, perhaps those that are most likely to experience flooding and sea level rise and public safety impacts. And those are generally defined as those areas in the floodplain today or near the floodplain. And because the risk of getting that wrong is probably much more significant to the town's well-being than perhaps a small townhouse community or a multifamily apartment building, which are the other two projects that are far further removed from a high-risk area. So, you know, there's various options. And of course, I don't know that we're in a position to make a firm recommendation tonight. This is a work session, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And I welcome any comments or questions.
Okay, and I think, Holly, do we want to hear from Todd before we have the council weigh in?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Todd, if you could briefly go over vesting again for the public and town council.
Todd, you're on mute.
I guess this makes it easier, doesn't it? Well, vesting is a legal concept in which establishes when an applicant has a formal right to a particular development. And that is what establishes the difference between an applicant and really somebody who has a right in the process. I could give you a whole litany of how the cases shook out. But ultimately, where the cases led out, and I can tell you just briefly, they started out with saying that basically it had to go through a permit that was actually developed and approved, that the permit had to have been issued. The courts then came back and said, no, that's too soon. And the court then came back and said, well, it has to be actual starting of development. In other words, some type of noticeable construction. The next part of it came back, because the developer then came along and he started construction in the woods. And then the courts then came back and said, no, it has to be construction that is noticeable to the public, which is the law as it stands right now. So not only does the applicant have to be, application have to go through the process that a permit has to be issued, but actually, the developer has to begin construction, and that construction has to be noticeable to the public. So none of the applications that are presently pending are anywhere near being vested so they would have a property right with regard to this. So basically, that's the best thing is, and those applications are nowhere near legally having a right to any type of development in those projects. Could I also follow up briefly on something else Chris mentioned?
Mayor, I think you're on mute. Yes, Todd, I, there he goes.
Mayor told me, she said, there he is. Okay, he's back.
Thanks, Larry. Did you want to say something, Todd?
Yeah, very briefly, you know, something that Chris was talking about, about, you know, having a public hearing in November, which, you know, would be great to have. But there's, you know, the sort of a middle ground here. And I understand Chris has been working hard, and he's a good ways down the road on this. You know, one thing that might speed this whole thing up, and if Chris would be available, and I haven't really brought this up, but I've been involved in things like this before, is the idea that, in essence, we don't have a quote-unquote "public hearing", but maybe public input sessions, that in essence, you know, where the development plan is right now, you could present it and say, okay, you know, members of the public, this is sort of where we are right now. Let me know your ideas right now, because this is the direction you're going in. And then, so you get a better idea as before a quote-unquote "public hearing" occurs back in November, maybe you could flesh out a few of these hiccups and other issues that may be occurring before that. And, you know, my thinking would be, and it's sort of, you know, thinking out loud and making a suggestion for all of you, is that would at least, you know, hopefully, when you do get to the public hearings in November, a lot of those problems or a lot of those questions are only going to be addressed or absolutely identified for the vote before the planning commission. So if that may be an idea, too, as a matter of fact, concerning how far along Chris is, you could almost have it in the very near future, saying, well, this is where we are now. What do you think? And that way, at least the planning commission will be more up to speed. That's not really any type of mandate. It's sort of like food for thought and a suggestion that you may want to think about.
And Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
I know the planning commission has already set a date for a public hearing. The document is out for the 60-day review period, and the state, Maryland, has the copy, the county does, and the town of North Beach. That's not to say that the town could notify the same people to say, public hearing has been postponed or canceled. But the plan has been well-vetted by the planning commission, and it's ready to go to the public. And I know the planning commission members are interested and looking forward to hearing the comments of the citizens of the town on the draft plan so that they can get to work in making any changes that might come about. But I don't know how extending the planning commission's approval process helps with the moratorium pending expiration. So that, I think that's perhaps the issue before you, I think.
Okay, I guess at this point in time, we'll hear from the council. I'll begin with Dr. Bodine.
Oh, yeah, my first question is for Todd. And it refers to memorandum from, to Pat via Holly from Chris, that one that was up on the screen. Yeah, that's it. And it's the page two. So if you go down just a little bit, please. Got it. Todd, stop right there. In that last, in the first paragraph, full paragraph that we can see, the last sentence says, "If the zoning ordinance changes before a project is vested to such a degree that the plan no longer complies with the new zoning", and that's what you're referring to in the court law that you mentioned, I believe, "this permit will be expired by action of the town". What is that action of the town? Who does it? And is there anything town council can do to ensure that it actually happens? So if we need to take action by the town, in this instance, who is the town?
Yeah, that's, you know, a lot of multiple parts to that question. But if you break up that sentence, "if the zoning ordinance changes before a project is vested", okay, so in essence, the ordinance, zoning ordinance changes before a project is vested. Okay, so saying that the zoning ordinance changes to such a degree that the plan is no longer complies with the new zone. So in essence, the plan that was submitted is no longer in compliance with the law. Okay, then its permit will be expired by an action of the town. I think it really, I think what that is looking to say is that it's automatically going to expire because you've got an application that doesn't comply with the law. So either the application So either the application is either going to have to change to comply with the law or the application is simply going to die because it's no longer in compliance with law. So I think that's really what's intended to be conveyed in that sentence.
So there's really expired by action of the town. There's really no direction or action or anything like for the planning administrator, the town administrator, the mayor, the town council, it just kind of happens. You know, there's no actual action that you know, and what I'm looking for is there any action that we should be aware of that ought to occur in an explicit manner instead of just happening.
No, one of two things will happen. Either the applicant will have to change the plan to comply with the new zoning law. And if they don't, the application is going to get denied. It's, it's.
Understood. And correct me if I'm wrong, when this request for an extension came through, uh, Chris, this was passed unanimously by, by planning and zoning, is that correct?
Uh, I, I believe it was, um, but the, the, uh, the actual motion was, uh, a request for you to consider, for the town council to consider an extension from three to six months. It, uh, that was the language that's necessary to get a consensus. So it was relatively broad, recognizing that the planning commission may need a full six months.
And what we've understood based on commentary that we received thus far is that if, if we were to go beyond three months and make it what would be equivalent of a year, that would be frowned upon, which is why we are looking at a three-month extension potentially. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, that's, that was my opinion and, um, but I, I was careful not to go too far into that question because I, I believe there are legal, their case law on that. And I didn't want to, um, advise you about legal matters, but Todd, uh, hopefully can offer some perspective. I, I just know from experience that, uh, it gets more serious when you extend it beyond a year and, uh, and if we do it, as I mentioned, we do it carefully under the guidance of the town attorney, which of course you would do anyway.
If, if I could follow up on that too? Oh, thank you. The, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So basically, uh, um, yeah, you know, Chris was right. When, when you time you go past a an absolute moratorium over 12 months, that's frowned upon because it's, it's, it's a question as actual i- i- is it almost the appearance of a taking by, by preventing any type of, uh, development project, you know, and it kind of just creates a, it, there's not an absolute rule on it, but it does create a, a bad inference on it. But, uh, yeah, if I could just express kind of a, a practical matter, suppose that the moratorium were to stay, you know, as it is right now. Um, uh, and all of a sudden, and everybody knows that there's new, uh, zoning law that's going to be taking effect. And the moratorium basically creates a prohibition of new applications. Well, if, if the zoning law isn't absolutely done within, within that moratorium, no developer in their right minds can be filing applications unless they know the law that they're going to be apply, applying with regard to the development. So, so even though technically the quote unquote moratorium would expire, um, a developer is still going to be coming back and saying, well, wait a minute. We got to know what law, what law is and what rules we're going to be playing under. So nobody's going to be filing a new application unless that planning, that, um, comprehensive plan is done. And also, um, uh, and also the current applications, they're going to have, they, the developer on that knows that they're going to have to make those changes and modifications to make sure they comply with the current law. So, so technically, you know, i- the, uh, that's up to your discretion whether to extend the moratorium. But just saying that if you choose not to, there's not many people that's going to be hurt because nobody's going to be filing an application unless they know for sure what that new law is going to be while he wants it's adopted. So, you know, that, that's completely your discretion as to how you want to handle that. But one way or the other, I think it'll, it'll, it'll end up in the same spot.
And because they may, uh, get their approvals and the rules may change before they become vested in their approvals. Right? That's, that's the last point here. And so, I mean, I, Todd, you're spot on. I was thinking the same thing, but then I thought, boy, what if someone wanted to take that chance? And, and the, the, the town found itself in a position of not having the new rules drafted yet. Uh, but you know, that's, that's the way it is, but I, I follow your point exactly.
Well, Chris, Chris, if I could follow up what you just said. So if we have some absolute crazily insane and incredibly rich developer who wanted to just waste his money on engineering fees, legal fees and all other fees to in essence, to move forward on a developer on a project that they know the rules are going to be changing on and they know it's not going to apply. And they know it's not going to get approved in time. And, you know, but, but let's face the fact, there's no one like that out there. Um, and, and nobody's going to move forward when they know the rules are going to be changing.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Pat. Um, well, just know that I have a lot of respect for our planning and zoning commission. This was the unanimous request that we brought in from them. I think it'll provide some clarity and some time, not just for them because they're well into the process. As you know, it's been moved to the public today, I believe, nine, eight. Um, I believe it's a, a matter of working hand in hand with them. And so I'm fully supportive of number two. I did have one more question. If this were to come before I set town council, which I hope it does, and I do hope that it's extended for three months, um, do we have to add any language to say that it's like concurrent to the end date, which is, uh, it says this moratorium is expected to last for nine months from the date of adoption. Is there any, and as on page three or four of the resolution, is there anything that we need to say that is concurrent or it just sort of naturally continues? You know what I mean? So if we were to pass this, let's just make a guess at our next meeting. Um, that three months would be added on to the nine months, which was a December 18th date. Um, I'm not sure when our next town, the date of our next town council meeting is. So in other words, there's no lapse here, right? This would be concurrent.
Correct. The resolution, the, the, the resolution would act as an extension. Um, not, not running concurrently, but it would act as an extension to go along, uh, after the end of, in, in the end of the current, um, um, moratorium.
Which is December 18.
Yes.
I think December 19.
I'm sorry, so.
So it would be effective December 19?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I wasn't sure about the voting time period, if you know, that, how that would work. Um, looking at, you know, the proposals that were put out, no extension, a three-month extension beyond a three-month extension or a partial extension. Um, I'm really impressed with the due diligence that planning and zoning has done. They've met, um, multiple times each month, uh, both in a regular worksite, uh, regular meeting and work sessions. And as a request from planning and zoning, an explicit request, um, I'm fully supportive of number two, which is, uh, what I would perceive as a three-month extension here. And so those are my comments. Based on what other, the other guys say, I might have more comments, but currently that's it, Pat. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Valerie. Uh, Charlie?
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, real quickly. Chris, the, um, when we passed this moratorium in the first place, uh, and there was a lot of debate about it, there were two variables that we talked about or two big factors that we talked about. One is obviously, uh, you know, ensuring that people are operating under the current rules, uh, or what will be the current rules. But there was also a notion that the planning and zoning committee, you know, was really working to get this plan done and didn't want the added burden or didn't feel that they could handle the added burden. I'm, I'm, I don't want to make that sound bad, but just to, to help alleviate an added burden of approving a slew of potential uh, uh, applications that might come through the process. Uh, do you think now that that latter, uh, is, uh, consideration is still an issue? Or do, uh, do you feel, um, that with the progress you've made, that that's no longer an issue?
Uh, great question. I, I think it would still be an issue. And again, I, I don't take that as negative. We were just saying that there's really no way that we could do proper diligence in processing these applications and still get the comprehensive plan done. Um, so the planning commission is very busy now transitioning into zoning text amendments and a proposed new zoning map. Um, so, uh, over the next, the course of the next few months until the public hearing commission will continue to be quite busy. Um, so I think the conditions are still the same.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, it seems to me, uh, looking at this, you know, where we are in the process now, and, and Chris, you just kind of confirmed that is a little more frenetic even than it was back at the time we approved, uh, the moratorium in the first place. And I was very hesitant about that. But it seems to me now today, um, it would be almost impossible, uh, and foolish not to do it. And the only point I'd go back to, uh, is what Todd has been talking about and what the point that I kept making in, in our meeting when we debated this is that even if someone decided today to put forward some kind of plan, it would be moot because it will never conceivably be vested before the comprehensive plan is done. Um, that said, why make the planning and zoning, uh, commission's job more difficult? Uh, so I support that. Um, I, I, I would likely support this in one form or another. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, got it. Uh, I appreciate the earlier comments, uh, Valerie and Charlie, um, made me sort of rethink my thinking here. Uh, just for the record, I did not support the initial, uh, moratorium. I'm a little bit hesitant about extending it. Uh, quite honestly, when I, uh, go on YouTube and watch some of the deliberations on planning and zoning and then, um, actually reading their, um, zoning text amendments document that was submitted. I think the schedule that's being laid out is, continues to be very optimistic on when that process is going to be completed. Um, so I think even if we went with a three-month extension of the moratorium to February, we're not going to be close to having a new comprehensive plan in place along with the required zoning amendments. So from an economic development point of view, I'm just concerned that if we did that, then basically what we've done is shut down any development in the town for a year since, uh, this started, well, it was nine months and then another three months on top of that. And beyond that, since there would not be a comprehensive plan in place. So I guess I'm just saying these things because I'm, I'm concerned of the, uh, message that the town is sending that we basically are shut down and don't really have a good idea of when we might be able to reopen uh, for further development in town. And that's just a concern to me. So I just wanted to get down the record. Thank you.
I, I don't think that is a, a concern. I, this, this moratorium has not shut the town down. It has not shut down all development. Uh, is that right, Holly and Chris?
Well, um, we've been processing a lot of, uh, permits, um, for existing development. So, uh, the heritage, for instance, is building quite a bit. Um, but in terms of new development or new proposals, uh, that would require a site plan or subdivision plan, uh, we have not done any of that. Our last proposal, uh, that we processed was the, um, Beach Elementary School project.
And then indeed was my point. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Before I go to Greg, I'm going to exercise my seat in the middle and just to just say a sentence or two. Um, as, as Valerie stated, um, you know, I also respect the, the members of planning and zoning and, and their recommendation. Um, and I, I would probably support, uh, want to get this done for the last time. If, if they recommended a three to six-month extension, I would be leaning towards minimum three, maybe four or five. That's my two cents. Um, Greg Marsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in short, all things considered right now, um, I would be in support of extending the moratorium for three months. I believe that's what the commissioners are recommending, uh, as a minimum. Um, and with respect to what Chris has laid out regarding going more than a year, uh, and with respect to the time it takes to submit and get things approved and the whole vested, um, portion of this, I, I, I feel like I would be comfortable with an extension of three months. Todd's made sense with his comments. I appreciate, um, that insight there. Um, I don't believe we're shutting down all development either. Um, if I'm remembering back on, on the way this went down, it was really the large projects. I believe that we were trying to get a clamp on, again, I get a handle on, um, that they were going to be in keeping with town vision. Uh, concur with, uh, Councilwoman Bodine, um, my sentiments and concerns regarding updates to the comprehensive plan lie with what the voting commissioners want in that plan. I know they've been working really hard. Uh, I was in attendance the last meeting. It was three and a half hours, I believe, uh, and I was there most steps of the way there on that one. Uh, and so extending the moratorium for three months, uh, there may be some heat and Bob Carpenter may send some picketers down at a town hall, but it's something that I can defend and get behind. Uh, so, uh, again, in short, I would be in support of a minimum of a three-month extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And, uh, lastly, Derek?
Yeah, a question for Chris. Uh, you had mentioned earlier that there are five plans waiting and, and the commission could take on, you know, perhaps two at a time. How, how is the order of those in, in that situation? How are the order of those projects determined? As far as which two would go first? Is that up to the developer specifically or like, or the commission have any input into that?
Well, there, there are no rules on that. Um, uh, generally we would, um, try to provide as much fairness and due process to the applicant as possible, just to keep the process above board. Uh, so, um, we've always sought to, you know, engage with the applicant. So if it, if it looked like the least complicated ones were the ones that could be worked on the easiest, perhaps they would move forward first. Um, but, um, they all arrived at the same time. So there's no, there's no sequencing of them uh, that's been provided to us. Uh, so Derek, I, I'm kind of in a chart, in uncharted territory here and deciding how that works. I think at the end of the day, I would probably contact the chairman of the planning commission and discuss scheduling and timing, sequencing and how, like the practical matters that are involved in getting these things approved. And that's, it would probably just be settled based on, on that alone.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks for that input. Yeah. I was just curious about that. Uh, so when we voted on this before, I, I, I made it know that I wasn't, uh, certainly wouldn't be supportive of extending the moratorium. And ideally I, I would still be in that situation, although I think, I think more importantly, and it was the comment that Todd made, uh, that you know, which, what developer in their right mind would submit, but you know, they might, you know, if they, if they think that the, uh, uh, the deliberations may extend longer than, you know, a few months and, and they could get, uh, you know, vested in, in time, uh, you know, they might, they might do that. Uh, but, uh, overarching point would be that they need to know what the rules, what the guidelines are that may affect their proposals. And I think that, you know, foremost is, is, it's got to be the concern. They get, they need to know what, you know, what the rules are that, that they're playing with and what the restrictions may be. And, and if, if that means extending the moratorium a few extra months, I think that's reasonable, especially you know, this, this is a monumental effort that our commission has undergone and they've done a fantastic job in, in every step of the way. And, you know, now the public is having their opportunity to review it and provide their comments and, you know, having gone through that before, you know, it may take a little bit longer to get adequate public comments. Uh, we, we kind of witnessed that with the walk of the community group. You know, we extended comment period just to make sure that we, we are able to get you know, to reach everybody and, and, and give everyone the opportunity to, to provide comments if they so cho- chose. And um, you know, sometimes that takes a little bit longer than, than we would like. So if, if that means extending the moratorium a, a few months, uh, then again, I think that might be reasonable.
Okay. Very good. Uh, thank you, Derek, and thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor.
We have a lot ahead of us here.
One, one brief follow-up comment, please.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, it's important for me to add that, uh, my intention would be, I mean, I'll never say, never say never, but my intention would be to not grant any further extensions to the moratorium. Um, and in respect to what, uh, Derek had said, um, you know, the applicants, the people that this means the most to are paying attention. You know, I, I'm not going to tell the planning and zoning commission what to do. Um, extending public comment, I think is probably not needed in this case, because again, the people that this affects the most are paying attention. Uh, but it would be my intention to not extend a moratorium beyond, uh, the three months. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next we have planning, commission, transmittal, zoning text amendments. Uh, Chris, I think you're going to take this one.
Yes, uh, thank you. So, uh, the planning commission actually drafted or directed that I draft this set of amendments many, many months ago. Uh, in fact, uh, probably in the winter or spring of last year or of this year and, um, but the commission has not acted on it yet, um, because it's been focused on the comprehensive plan. What this set of changes would do is to bring the maximum height of all buildings in town to 35 feet. Uh, as you know, the planning commission is, um, authorized to make recommendations on zoning text amendments and, uh, and this one comes from them, uh, and is a recommendation to you, and it can only be adopted after you hold a public hearing, uh, and of course adopt legislation. So the proposal is consisting of three amendments. The first amendment would make the maximum building height in the residential high density district, 35 feet, and the maximum height in the maritime district, 35 feet. That would mean every zoning district would have a maximum height of 35 feet. There's a, a notation that was added to the table on that first page of your text amendments. And it basically says that not, it doesn't matter if a project is required to be elevated out of the floodplain. 35 feet is 35 feet. So you can't rot, raise your structure out of the floodplain by four, five or six feet, then go 35 feet. You're still capped at 35 feet. Um, and the reason actually that statement is in there is because it had previously said, it previously granted flexibility to folks who had, uh, houses within the floodplain. And, uh, through a change of terminology or, or language, it was turned into a, a comment that basically said you can't take advantage of the flood zone elevation. So 35 feet period, no matter where you are in the town. Uh, amendment two, um, removes item, uh, 290 dash 19 L two. And that section allowed multifamily buildings and commercial uses to establish the finished grade at the level above a parking area. So you wouldn't begin going up to the maximum height until you provided parking under your building. So if you provided parking under the building and it was, you know, 10 feet tall, the parking garage under the building, you would start from that point, 10 feet above the ground and then measure up to 70 feet or 50 feet or 35 feet, whatever the case may be. So now that section is proposed to be stricken entirely. So 35 feet is 35 feet, uh, no matter where it is in the town. And amendment three, um, eliminates the flexibility that the planning commission had to authorize an increase in building height for multifamily buildings in the bonus density overlay zone. Um, so there's, there's again, 35 feet is 35, uh, and these three sets of changes would prohibit any building taller than 35 feet.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Uh, I'll begin discussion with, uh, Derek.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Uh, so just to clarify, if this is put in place, this would only be applicable to new construction, correct? So for instance, if an existing structure, if an owner, whether it's single family or multifamily, if they were rebuilding on their current and approved footprint, uh, would they be able to, uh, reconstruct the, the house or the facility or the structure that they have now, or would they have to in, in theory downgrade or potentially downgrade to, to this without, um, having an opportunity to, I guess, other than through Board of Appeals to, uh, to, to, you know, reachieve what they previously had.
Yeah. So, uh, a, a new building would be built according to the new rules and that would be 35 feet. Uh, there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that says if a building is, um, destroyed, say by a flood, it can be built back in kind, which I take to mean if it was 36 feet, you could build it 36 feet.
So an active nature hurricane comes through, knocks down a 50-foot home. That, that home could be built back to 50 foot.
That's right. Right. But if you choose to redevelop your property, um, or you have other type of non-active god type of reasons.
Fire, a fire destroys their home.
Derek, I, I think I'll just, I'll need to turn to that section of the code and, and find it just so I can speak definitively on that point because I, I just don't have it in front of me.
No, that's okay. And I, I don't need a firm answer. I was just trying to make the point that, uh, or try to understand generally what the, how strict is, are these restrictions because they're by appearances are pretty strict. And for me, you know, honestly, uh, I'm not, I've never been a fan of broad brush restrictions such as this because there are always exceptions and it's not necessarily, the exceptions aren't necessarily by desire. There might be natural reasons or why an exception needs, needs to be considered. And to me, this doesn't provide a reasonable avenue for any developer, whether it's a multifamily or a single-family property owner to have an opportunity to, to, uh, have the exception to go above 35 feet. So in that regard, I'm honest, honestly, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, uh, of, of really any of these amendments for that, for that reason. Just because it's too broad and too restrictive and it doesn't give our residents an opportunity potentially, uh, to, uh, to, you know, build a structure that suits their needs. And I'll leave my comments at that.
Thank you, Derek. Mr. Morris.
Yeah, um, I know planning and zoning is listening, um, at, at, at least through Chris, you know, carry back, uh, our comments this evening. Uh, I would like to see a discussion amongst the commissioners regarding, uh, Councilman Fabre's concerns there. Uh, but otherwise I don't really have any questions regarding the proposed amendments. Uh, my biggest concerns really, uh, that all changes that are, are being recommended or being recommended by the commissioners, all changes recommended by the commissioners are brought to council level, completed as requested by them. Uh, and the changes initiated by commissioners, uh, receive global recognition and integration across all written code and their accompanying maps. And otherwise I don't have any questions about this. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, Larry.
Yes, uh, I'd like to, uh, echo some of Councilmember Fabre's concerns. I, I share many of those concerns. One, I'll just, as a general statement, I don't quite understand what we're trying to achieve here, uh, in terms of these limitations. I mean, I know what we're trying to achieve and that's the limit, the height of buildings, but I don't quite understand why we're doing that. I believe these requirements would adversely impact, uh, more moderately priced housing such as townhouses. Uh, and consequently, the availability of potential employees for our local businesses because that's where many of them would like to live is in multifamily type units, townhouses. If one looks around our town, you would notice almost all of our current multi-unit housing would not meet this criteria, including Windward Key and my own Seagate. I think coupled with that change, uh, the one change in how the height is measured, not taking into account any, uh, parking space underneath the unit. Uh, that is, um, not providing any incentives at all for off-street parking. And we have a number of challenges already with off-street parking. And to discourage people from providing that parking underneath any new units, I think is not a good idea. So for those reasons, I, I share, uh, Councilmember Fabre's concerns on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Uh, Charlie.
Yeah, I, I have the utmost respect for, for Larry and, and for Larry Brown and, and the planning commission. Um, but I, I, um, I, I can't get behind this at this time, uh, for all the reasons that Derek and Larry Jaworski just said, I won't repeat those, but I'll, I'll add, uh, I think one more, which maybe is what Larry was trying to get at when he said, you know, what are we trying to accomplish? Let's let the process of the comprehensive plan, the public input, and the review play out to see if these are, um, overwhelmingly demanded by the public, what other changes may be in the comprehensive plan. That process, that's what that process is for. Why would we usurp that process? Uh, now with these amendments, particularly given that if we support planning and zoning with a moratorium, then, then the comprehensive plan provides the opportunity to figure out what these types of restrictions, uh, should be. So I just don't, I don't quite get, uh, behind passing these amendments right now, um, in a hurry.
Thank you, Charlie. And Valerie.
Uh, yeah, um, the first thing I'll say is, um, when this came up a year ago, and you can see that in your resolution R 21 3, it's E, it says November 12th, 2020 agenda into the discussion on zoning and height limits. I was then listening to the planning and zoning meetings and decided the best thing I could do to understand what a 35-foot height limit looked like was take the field trip. And I did that. I took a field trip. I drove to St. Michael's with the complete intent and only reason to see what a 35-foot height limit looked like. And so I toured around that area. And I drove and I saw independent living facilities. I saw townhouses. I saw single-family homes and I saw businesses and they were all at 35 feet. And then I decided to look at St. Michael's code to see how they did that because they're also a coastal Maryland community. And they just said 35 feet straight up, no special exceptions, no nothing. And what I found about St. Michael's is that it was charming. And so when I ran on small-town charm, um, wondering what kind of, what we get out of, um, a potential 35-foot height limit, it is the ability to better our quality of life in that we can create the same charm and maintain the same charm that we have by controlling our heights. And I saw multifamily homes. I saw every sort of structure you could imagine because I looked for it. It was my sole reason for being there. All that and a good lunch. Um, I just wanted to say that any sort of building type can easily fit with a 35-foot height limit. Um, because I saw it. I wanted, I wanted to see it. I wanted to experience it. Um, regarding this specific, so they've been talking about this for a long time. And Chris, one thing I'll say is was this one by planning and zoning voted on unanimously? I'm always going to ask, I think Greg kind of asked the same thing, you know, trying to respect what planning and zoning is doing. Was this voted upon unanimously?
I don't know.
I, I listened to the meeting. And it was, it, there were no dissension in the voters and planning and zoning. And so I would make one change because I think, um, especially if this were to go forward and come to town council um, in any sort of way like, uh, or is it change, uh, change? Section 290 dash 19, I think we would have to have one change because we know that planning and zoning is working on the comprehensive plan. And having listened to the meetings, they intend to offer up to us and the town, uh, different zoning district names. And if they do different zoning district names, I don't think the way this is written, um, works. And so whether we send this forward to town council as, you know, an action item, um, in the form of minorities to make an actual change, or whether it goes back to planning and zoning, how it needs to read. And if you bring it up, amendment one, right now it's on amendment three on the screen. I'll say exactly what I mean, what I, what I think needs to be changed and what I'll make a motion to change or direct planning and zoning to change, whatever is appropriate. It says right there, table requirements, exceptions as noted below to change the maximum building height in the residential high-density RHD district from 50 to 35 and in the maritime district from 70 to 35. Um, those are what our current terms are and that'd be applicable if we weren't potentially making changes to these, these zoning district names. And so if I might suggest, I think they should cross out the words in that sentence, the residential identity RHD district from 50 to 35 feet and in the maritime M district from 70 feet. You cross out those words from the to 70 feet and replace with in all zoning districts. Then whatever planning and zoning presents to through public comment with and public hearings and finally decided to do, if we do change these names, it would be applicable, um, to all zoning districts. Now, if all zoning districts during public hearings or during comment from town council or during amendments or changes, we decide 35 feet is not appropriate, um, we would still have it applying to all districts, at least most current districts. And I mean, the future districts, we currently do not know what their names are going to be in fact. And so if this were to go forward to town council for action, I would, you know, when the time comes, I would suggest that change, um, remove like I said, residential high-density and maritime district. So I can give you one example. They're talking about maritime commercial. They're talking about splitting the maritime into four different districts. I don't know if it's going to happen or not, if it don't get through, but that's what they're discussing. If that were to happen, um, then this table would obviously have to be replaced. And the words in this amended section would also have to be replaced. So I just think saying all zoning would be appropriate. And my, my only comment is I, this has been no secret. Um, it has been in all of our reports that they've been interested in 35 feet. Since you started getting reports from Larry Brown. So at least since, uh, November 12th, so December 2020, that um, report from him. And it's a constant discussion and it's been constantly voted positively or unanimously by them. And so whether we decide to take action on that, this, which I hope we would, um, and send it to council, send it to us to vote on it. You know, it's not like this should be a real shock to anyone. And as someone, one of you guys mentioned, um, people are paying attention. And so this ought not to be a surprise to anyone. And we would obviously have to have a, and rightfully so, a public hearing. So just say, you know, I tried to do my due diligence. I went on my field trip. I had a great launch. I had noticed every sort of architectural thing that St. Michael had. I had their planning and zoning map with me. And to say that it like limits any sort of like opportunity is they made it happen. They just made it happen and it looks charming and it looks great. And we're probably two years too late. And so, um, I think it would greatly benefit our quality of life here in Chesapeake Beach, especially for our residents who consistently say that they want small-town charm. And if they want small-town downtown charm, they can go in, take a look and see what it could actually look like. And those are my comments on this. I, I'm not sure where we're going with this. We're sending you back to planning and zoning. And those are my comments on this. I'm not sure where we're going with this, if we're sending it back to planning and zoning, or what I hope is that it would go forth as something to be actionable by Town Council in a in a future meeting, maybe in October, but I don't want it to die, so I think we need to decide what our action is as a group, although we can't vote, like, what are we going to do with this? We have to send it back to planning and zoning and have it come with the rest of Texas amendments as a package? Or are we going to respect the unanimous vote and send it forward for us to consider via public hearing and the process? And so that's my remaining question on this is, I don't want it to die, and so I think those are the chief choices, I'm not sure, but send it back to planning and zoning and they can note my concern about having current zoning districts as opposed to all zoning districts. Or are we going to take action at the Town Council level? And whatever's decided here, I'll totally respect, and so those are my comments. I just want to know where it's going to go.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, one follow-up comment, please?
Yes?
Thank you. We're not here to decide if we're going to pass these amendments at the next council meeting, we're they have voted to send this stuff up to us. I know they worked hard, too, to make this happen in time for this work session. This is just a review of the culmination of years of efforts by planning and zoning. They've had tremendous outreach that have brought them to this point. My previous comments notwithstanding, I would like to see a discussion regarding Councilwoman Favre's comments and concerns, but I agree with Charlie that we've got a ways to go, this has to play out, there's a public hearing. If there's folks that want to stand up and advocate for bigger buildings, there's certainly plenty of opportunity for that. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. I believe planning is done and will be happy if we pass a, if we extend the moratorium and, you know, go through that process, but I'll speak to their chair soon. Next, Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Capital Improvements. I'll give it to Holly.
Okay, Mayor, I think Chris did, were you?
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, would you, may I just have one more, one more comment on this? It's really in response to Councilwoman Bodine. I was a little thrown off by your question, although it was a simple question about whether it was unanimous or not. Right before the, the plan, and the Town Council could benefit from this, right before the commission voted, the chairman actually moved that the matter be placed before the public in a planning commission public hearing before it were be forwarded to you. And so that motion died. So I don't know how the chairman actually voted on this particular matter, but the, the remaining members voted to approve it, as Valerie said. So I'm sorry, I was just puzzled a little bit in answering that question, I got sidetracked, but that's the the more, more well-rounded question, answer. Thank you. And that's all.
Thank you. Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Capital Improvements.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So this is a capital improvement item that we had spoke about actually in May. We released an RFP for filter covers, and it was decided at that point that we wanted to look at some alternative options. We received one bid proposal, and it was determined to, to not meet what the town had expected. The total cost at that time was $86,520. We took a look at this with our town engineer to go another route and actually received another proposal from McCrone. And this proposal will include that Wayne Newton at Messons and Associates would be providing oversight to the project. And we have before Town Council a revised estimate for the filter covers. And, and just for a reminder of this project, this is something that is necessary for enhanced nutrient removal process. And Mayor, I have John and myself here available for questions.
Okay. I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Yeah, just to make sure, and to restate it again, this is, would be a shared expense with our partners and therefore coming out of the wastewater treatment I always say it wrong, I always use the old term, Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Fund, right?
That is correct.
All right, and they've agreed to this, obviously?
Yes, we, we do have a quarterly partnering meeting, and we've spoken about this project during several meetings. They were aware that we were looking at some alternative options. Yeah, so they are, they are in full understanding on this project and how we're going to move forward.
Oh, okay, and often what I do is I look for Larry's questions, because he's the expert on this sort of thing, and so if I have any follow-ups after Larry finishes or, you know, any time, which I doubt, because he usually covers everything, I'll get back, but I have no further questions on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, I have nothing additional.
Thank you. Larry?
Several things. Just to clarify for the record for everyone, that this proposal that we have here from McCrone does not include the actual construction of the filter covers, just so everyone's aware of that. This is the engineering associated with the design and the services during construction only, so this is not the bottom line of the whole improvement. This project is critical and essential to the operation of the plant, as I've discussed in the past and mentioned directly to John Castro. It's imperative that these covers be designed so that they are easily removable, or at least easily able to be open, so the operators can get a visual on the tank and the performance itself. I'm sure that'll be covered. Just looking, oh, in the initial bids that were received, when we only got the one bid from HRG, I presume McCrone did not, did they attend the pre-bid meeting? Do we know?
Uh, no, they did not. We only had two contractors attend the pre-bid meeting and only received one.
I was just curious. I was just curious if they did, why they didn't submit a bid, but that's unimportant. And then just again, looking at the costs here, the, and again, I'll remind everyone, when you look at the original submittals from HRG, they had an item three in their solar-powered system. We decided to not include that in this project, so you need to take that price out. So looking at the prices as submitted, for the design, which is design services, HRG was $58,490, McCrone is $25,820. And for the services during construction, HRG was $28,030, and McCrone is $20,040. So that the total price, as Holly mentioned, for HRG was $86,520, and the McCrone submittal is $45,860, so it's a very very nice decrease in the overall cost for the engineering part of this project, not the construction. So I support it, and again, just wanted to reiterate to please make sure that when they do this design, they make it so that those covers are easily opened. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Greg?
Yes, sir, thank you. So I understand the probably the original one proposal that we received from Herbert Rowland and Grubik actually included the construction of the design improvements?
Let me scroll up to the snapshot. So this is Herbert Rowland Grubik's original proposal.
Right, so item five, is that actually construction of what they were designing?
That's designed as well.
These are all design fees, then? None of it's construction at all in either proposal?
That's correct.
So, right, so I guess Larry was pointing that out in a more efficient way. Okay, so what we would end up with would be, and then I know McCrone is reputable, thanks Wayne for, and whoever's responsible for pulling them in. We've come up with a a much more efficient pathway here for a successful, dependable design. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and I might have mentioned this at the original, when we had reviewed the original proposal from Herbert, but when we get into these e-Maryland Marketplace, I've got a decade of experience bidding through that, and it's a great vehicle, and I know it's requirement on a lot of levels to include that, but when we've got, I would just continue to encourage, when we have some, some of the specialized work, to really lean on some of our professionals, higher professionals, and their, and their connections to pull in some of the specialists that we need to have, you know, free bids to, you know, we may get one through Maryland Marketplace, because it is highly specialized, but outreach to, through our professionals is another way to pull in qualified bidders, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And Derek?
Really good questions and in follow-up and discussion. I don't have anything further, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next, Public Works Agreement. Holly?
Yes, Mayor, I believe we have one more item in between there on the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant.
I'm sorry, okay, we'll jump back up on that. Really? I, yeah, that's right, I don't, I haven't updated the agenda, I'm sorry. Read it out loud?
Sure, we have the sorry, Mayor.
What I was saying, I was not provided with an updated agenda. Could you read it, please?
Yes, we have the Water Reclamation Treatment Plant Electric Bus Bar.
Okay. Go ahead, Holly. Thank you.
Okay, so this is an emergency purchase that, that is critical in nation, nature because of the relation to the basin operation. We do not have proposals yet, but we are, John is working closely with several contractors to bring a proposal to Town Council at our upcoming Town Council meeting, so we wanted to make you aware of the expenditure and, and allow you to ask any questions about the necessity, and John is available as well for questions, Mayor.
Okay, if the council has any questions, I'll begin with Derek.
Do you have an idea of a range of what the cost would be, and then I assume that's would be within budget? Expected?
Yes.
I can, I can speak to that. No, we don't have a quote yet, because this is going to be some specialized work. The bus bar is the main thing that's in a motor control center. And you have to have either qualified electricians to install it and take it out, or you have to get the manufacturers to come out and do it. So it is specialized electrical work with high voltage. This is, this is an 800 amp system. So it's very specialized work. We're waiting to, we have contacted Eaton, and we have contacted another master electrician company, Bailey and Ship, who have come down and will have already looked over, and I was hoping to have the the quotes by today, but that kind of fell apart. So hopefully in the next week, we will have the quotes, and hopefully with it, I am within range where I can get it done out of my budget. And we, hopefully we won't have to make any amendments. But I wanted to counsel, just to be aware, that there will be another purchase coming up, because this, this repair is pretty critical to running the aeration blowers to, you know, provides the main process control to the plant.
Yeah, and I assume you'll have all the support you need, but so what's the timeframe, you know, in best-case scenario to get the the blower, get it all replaced and back operational? And I guess
Last Friday, and Eaton said they can probably, once we get the quote in, they can gear up and probably get this done within, within two weeks.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's pretty quick. And so the backup, is there any concerns that the backup blower would, would not remain operational that long, or?
Well, I can run it right now, because we're at a position of where the bus bar went bad, we're still using part of that bus bar. In retrospect, once we do the construction and all, we're bringing in a portable generator to be able to operate that blower while that work is going to be performed.
Okay, great.
That will, that will run our backup blower.
Okay, good. All right, thanks, John. No, no further questions.
Greg, any questions?
No questions for me, go, John.
Go, John. Larry?
Yeah, obviously this is critical, needs to be done as soon as possible, but I have to ask the question, shouldn't, or why wasn't this identified during the recent upgrade?
There was, due to the construction, they, they actually changed, did a lot of modifications in there. Plus, we added a little bit more modifications. The project requested that we added all-new 12 mixers. And the way they designed it was, they cut that bus bar in half and left four banks of the old existing MCC in. They brought in a whole new MCC for the, the 12 mixers and set that into the blower room. Then they ran the power from the original bus bar over to the new bus bar, which was installed in the new MCC. Now, we came back and added variable drive blowers. So we did some work to number four bank by adding the 200 horsepower variable drives. During that work, possibly had two electricians check it out, and they said possibly when that was installed, the torque on the bolts to the bus bar, one of them might not have made the top, the torque. And through time, it started coming loose and sparking, and with that high juice, it doesn't take much to melt that bolt down. So we were dropping phases.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie, any questions?
No, I have nothing to add.
Dr. Bodine, any questions?
I know, just good luck, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Public Works Agreement, Holly?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And we do have Wayne on the call. Thank you, Wayne, for joining. Thank you. So with the Richfield Station Public Works Agreement, this is for Block S, and Councilwoman Bodine had asked that I have that available on a map, so this is this area here of Richfield Station. And this, Public Works Agreements were in place for this area and had long expired. So we use this as an opportunity to refresh our Public Works Agreements. When Wayne came on board, Wayne, Todd, and Chris, as well as Jay, worked very closely to establish a new format that we are now using for all of our Public Works Agreements. This new format provides some additional protections for the town. I have a couple bullet points that Wayne put together for, for us that I'll go through in terms of the, just a summary of the additional protections. The updated cost estimates for all outstanding and punchless work is included. We have a bonded value at 150% of the estimated cost on the Public Works Agreement. All bonds were updated based on the approved cost estimate of the 150%. We have a 10% maintenance bond required to be held for one year after the town notifies that work has been complete. In any default under the Public Works Agreement, the town would, would complete the work. And the cost of the work shall include a 25% management fee. So the Public Works Agreements we have are before you, and they mainly all deal with grading and water and sewer. And this is for Block S, which is Clear Spring Drive, Crestview Lane, and Ridgeview Court, and also the Crestview Lane Pump Station. And Mayor, we're available for questions.
Yeah, okay, for the Richfield Station line, I'll begin with Valerie and Yeah, okay, for the Richfield Station line, I'll begin with, with Valerie and walk away around the horn if you have any, any questions.
Yes, I do. Back up the map, please. And thank you. Great. So I guess my, my first question is, and I'm not sure who it's going to, so anybody can grab it. As I read through this agreement. And my overarching concern is this, and I'll just read it. What are the effects, if any? On our current open space agreements with the developer? Because my interest is to ensure that all open spaces have such. So that not even a treehouse could be developed there. So if we look at this and we look like towards the bottom into the west and the east. You'll notice some open space there. Is all open space going to maintain? I don't know who goes to. That's my question.
So, so that these agreements are not. Addressing that, that is part of the site plan that was approved by the Planning Commission. So my, my understanding, I can pull those, those plans, but open space was not impacted, but I definitely could pull those and send those over to you.
Yeah, I just, you know, in looking at the area, I just wanted to ensure that. Any sort of like. Open spaces. Always open space in perpetuity, whether it be a bird habitat or. What have you, forested areas. I just want to ensure that. Open space is always open space and that nothing can supersede that. And that's my concern. When we talk. Either for grading or for water and sewer. There has been talk previously about inspections by, by third parties before the town assumes any ownership. Does that apply in this instance?
Wayne, do you want to address that? You're on mute, mate, Wayne.
Sure, thanks, Holly. In this instance, this, these agreements basically provide security for the town. And the town is doing the inspection, just like we are in heritage and elsewhere. If the inspection work which is done by the town, which is primarily by Jay and his crew, is not satisfactory, then we have, this gives us protections and ability to go back. To the developer or the builder, whoever is on, on the, on the agreement. To correct and perfect whatever we need. That's what this is for. So in this case, the inspections will be done by the town. And at the, at the. Town's recommendation of approval that they're satisfied with all the improvement work. Then we would accept the work as complete. I mean, we start a maintenance period of one year. Throughout that one year, the developer would be required to make any improvements or. Protect or fix any damages that occurred. At the end of the one year, we would then accept it and provide bonds back. So that's really the purpose of these agreements.
Understood. And as I continually try to learn and understand these public works agreements better. Sometimes my questions won't be completely applicable, but I'm going to have another one. Which again, might not be completely applicable, but I'll try. Once built. And approved, who maintains? It, is it the HOA or the town? Who has maintenance responsibility? And I was looking at like, for example, numbers on the very first agreement that we were given. I'm looking at concerning grading, Richfield Station Block S, just you know where I'm looking, I'm looking at number three, it says drainage. And so I was thinking about that drainage and my question is. Once built and approved. Who maintains? The drainage that's referenced here, is it the town, the HOA? Well, it has to be one or the other. Who maintains it?
So that, that depends upon what the record plat set forth for who's going to own that particular portion of the property. So if it's in a public right of way or in a public easement that the town would be responsible for, the town would do the maintenance. If it's not within those easements or public rights of way, it would be on HOA property and the HOA would be responsible for. The purpose of this section is to ensure that drainage is, is installed correctly in accordance with the plan. It gives us the ability to confirm that prior to accepting the, the pillar work screen for, 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 into our system.
And when we talk about the plaques, again, I'm not an expert of these. But it's very clear, clear. To you and to Chris, and whoever needs it to be clear to. You know, about, we've already talked about open space, but also that. When we get to the plaques. Ownership or responsibilities very clear, right? I mean, like, there's no question here about which part is going to be maintained by whom, is there?
Not in my opinion, there is, there's, it's, it's a clear division.
It's a clear division. All right, one more, and I'm sorry to pick up the time. If you go on the same agreement, number seven, improvements and amenities, again, I just didn't understand. It says. Improvements and amenities required in the letter granting preliminary subdivision. It has a list of stormwater management, as you can see. Interior, street trees, recreational facilities, and so forth. Which one of these, if any, are applicable to any of these agreements that we're discussing tonight? So when we talk about recreational facilities or interior free trees. Or led walks or trails. Since none of them were quote unquote checked or xed, I wasn't sure which specifically were applicable to the agreements that we're talking about here. Which was a genesis for my question about open space. Because if you're starting to talk about trails and interior street trees and stormwater management. It brings me right back to. Maintaining previously agreed upon open space in perpetuity. And so. Can you understand which of these, if any, apply of the listed things? Apply to these agreements?
So in this case, actually all of the agreements for Richfield Station. None of these apply. These would be, remember, we're trying to make this a boilerplate agreement to be used for all projects. The one you're, in particular, you're looking at is for a mass grading on the site. To ensure that the, the grading work is done correctly. There will be projects, I expect there could be projects that would include these other amenities. Typically, if these amenities were going to become town owned amenities. That's when we will be checking these boxes and including those in this agreement. But the agreements that you have now are pretty much just wrap up agreements from the prior exposed, sorry, expired agreements. And we're wrapping up punchless work and none of these amenities are shown here apply to these particular agreements, but there may be some in the future that will.
Okay, I'll try to, next time we have this sort of agreement come through, I'll try to remember to ask the same questions to ensure that open space is maintained. And that. Whatever sort of, forever talking about new stormwater management plans, that everything in those new plans. That may come in the future are maintained and inspected. So I'll try to remember to ask the same questions again, but thank you very much. Your explanations are spot on.
Thank you.
Charlie.
I just, you know, focusing on, on this agreement, my, you know, my understanding is that. You know, this is, this is really related to what role public works plays in. Maintaining these areas. And I, I'm just going to ask, is this in sync with agreements that we have, you know, with Richfield Station, other parts of their development or with other HOAs?
Yes, this is in sync with the prior public works agreements that were. Executed for this property. Again, this is just an update to bring everything up to the current standard and the current costs. Since they had expired, our goal is to get them completed into our system and finished. So yes, it's in accordance with the prior grants.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Larry.
Yeah, Wayne, thank you. Obviously, a whole bunch of work has gone into preparing this job well done. Just a, a very simple question for you. I see absolutely no mention anywhere in here of stormwater retention detention facilities and particularly given the location of that piece of property. Adjacent to the marsh area, I'm just wondering about the necessity for that.
You're correct, Larry. That's because all those facilities will be privately owned and maintained by the HOA. They would not be part of Jay's maintenance responsibility, and that's why they're not in here.
And, and if, or when they do install those, my understanding is that comes under the supervision of the county. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we now have an agreement with the county where they will not release a grading bond without our approval.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Larry. Greg.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wayne, good evening again. Regarding, I know we're just talking about the Richfield Station Public Works Agreements, they're. These are punch lists accompanied by. Calculations that give the town the financial leverage to make sure that the stuff gets completed. I do want to, we'll mention again that. Richfield Station Homeowners Association and the Town of Chesapeake Beach have both. Inherited an awful lot of bad work from this developer, and I should say that again, but I won't. I know that, you know, Jay knows, and we talk about this about every six months, it comes up. But Wayne, a little concerned about something that you mentioned there. These, the infrastructure. Underground infrastructure that these punch lists cover. Are we talking about items that are going, about any items that are actually going to be turned over to the HOA there?
The specifics of this public works agreement would be items that Jay and his crew or the town would be responsible for maintaining. This agreement as, as in our agreement with the county for the grading permit, gives us the ability to have, have input. Onto things that the HOA would be responsible for, but the specifics of this agreement are only for town owned facilities.
Okay, thank you for that. So we've got underground, we have infrastructure that invariably will run under some HOA privately owned property. And we've talked about this before about cleaning up some of the previous messes that have been made. Really, by probably previous civil engineers, the town has hired, not to mention, like, bring up this developer again. I'm just falling short on providing the easements needed. By the town to make sure they have access to maintaining all the underground facilities that, that may cross under HOA property. Is that correct?
I'm not familiar with that at all, Mr. Morris. I can tell you this agreement provides the access we need to maintain the facilities that we would accept.
Which, and again, restating paraphrasing, which includes all underground infrastructure that's presented in these punch lists.
Correct.
Okay, and. Give me a second here. Certainly, I don't have any questions regarding Wayne's recommendations here. Again, I would just caution. The town and be cognizant that the town and the HOA here. Have inherited an awful lot of bad work, and I know. That's the reason we have these punch lists and we're aggressively, you're aggressively going after them and you hold money to make sure you're leveraged, to make sure they're done correctly into a spec into our standards. Those are my only comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Lastly, Eric.
Yeah, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay, Rod and Real Public Works Agreement. Derek, I'll share it with you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for sharing this. This has been one that, that we've been looking at for a while. I remember reviewing this in the early stages. And so I'm glad to see it, but I don't really have any specific questions for, for Wayne on this one.
Thank you. Councilman Morris.
Yeah, this, this particular agreement was something that I think Council weighed in on several years ago. Is that right, Holly?
That's correct.
Yeah, it's not the exact same agreement. It's been changed a little bit. I don't have any questions about it. I'm happy with. With the way that it's, that it's written there. I did have one question regarding. Item four. It's just a clarification, if you will. Just wondering what, what the, what it means where they talk about. Well. The developer assigned shall not be held liable for any offsite discharge in or through the designated collection area. Dot, 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 or any resulting discharge into the waters of the Chesapeake Bay and its tributaries. What does that mean?
Okay, so we're looking at. Let's see, not, not the, not the amended agreement. You're looking at the, I think, the storm filter. Maintenance and inspection agreement. Sorry, I need.
Yes.
Okay, this is, this is the section, okay. So I could maybe give an overview and Wayne wants to fill in any further details, but basically the developer is maintaining a filter that is accepting runoff that they cannot control. So it's, it's pulling runoff from a lot of other areas. So I think that's in there to protect that they do not have the ability to regulate other properties. The town has that ability to do that. So it's our responsibility to ensure that's not happening and running to that filter.
Awesome. Um, is it, I thought it was the case that this particular filter was, was. Getting runoff from the Rollins parking lot property. Is that not true?
That's correct.
So how does this paragraph, I mean. What if the, the developer said, hey, you know, we know already that there's runoff coming from the, the Rollins property? How does, how does, what does that mean with regards to item four?
I mean. Go ahead.
Holly, I mean, I remember going over this with Eric and other things. Basically, what this covers in my mind is if there were a diesel truck in Rollins parking lot that spilled fuel. The Rod and Reel is not liable for that discharge because it's going through their privately owned line now this filter out into the bay. So. It covers them if something happens upstream that they cannot prevent going through their private filter.
Thank you, Jay.
Sure. Okay, but that, I, item four doesn't actually include just a clean runoff, clean, if you will, quote unquote, coming from the parking lot? In other words. The question to our professionals that we've hired here, it's, we won't. Be approached by the Rod and Reel at some future date regarding just a normal stormwater runoff from those adjacent properties?
That's that, Greg, if I can answer that, that's not the intention of this, this requirement. Normal stormwater runoff will be filtered by this filter, and that's the whole purpose of why we. Utilize offsite drainage because it was actually the, the better choice from a clean bay perspective. And this paragraph is simply, just like Jay said, if there's a major spill in Rollins parking lot, no one can control. That from occurring and the Rod and Reel, the filter will still do what it can do and filter what it can filter and clean what it can clean. But it may not be to the purity levels that we'd like, and that's what this is speaking to. You know, in case of accident or things are beyond, beyond their control. They can't be held liable for diesel fuel getting in the bay because the filter didn't clean it because the filter is not designed for that, that occurrence.
Yeah, I don't have any objection with that. That's pretty plain there. I would just caution to. Would hate a year from now or a couple down the road for someone to say, come up and the developer to say, hey, you've got this water runoff and. And it's just standard parking lot runoff. It's not necessarily contaminated. Not trying to make a mountain out of a molehill. That was really my only comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Larry.
A couple of my questions have already been answered, but I just had one other one is, I see no requirement in here anywhere that the developer needs to regularly submit documentation or proper operation and maintenance of that filter. To anybody.
I thought that was covered in here, but we can look into that further.
Yeah, I'd appreciate if I, if it's in there, I missed it. I'm sorry. But yeah, I think that's pretty important that they submit to somebody that they're doing the proper O and M on the filter.
Okay, take a look at that.
Just to follow up on that, as a stormwater management device, the county has the obligation through, through their agreement with MDE to monitor and. Inspect all these, all private stormwater management devices. So that's how that would be, be done. MD, the county would come in and do an inspection, confirm that the filter is or is not functioning properly, and then issue a notice to the private owner to fix, fix or repair.
Very good. Thank you, Wayne.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie.
I have nothing further.
Thank you, Valerie.
Oh, yeah, thanks. I have a few questions. Just to make sure that I understand. So this is, we've discussed, this is to control stormwater that comes from outside. The Chesapeake Beach boundaries or property. Goes into the, what they call in the agreement of the facility, which is the filter. And then it goes out to the Fish and Creek. As a stormwater mitigation system. Is that the basic idea of this?
Generally, yes, but there is also some on site water from the Rod and Reel property that comes into this.
I was thinking the same thing. I think it was Greg's example of an. I was thinking the same thing. I think it was Greg's example of an oil leak in the Rod and Reel parking lot. I mean, in Rowland's or some, the bank or wherever, off-site. It would be possible for an oil spill from a car from something else to be of such an extent that, but come from the private property as opposed to, you know, come from the Rod and Reel as opposed to the parking lot or outside of it. Is there a way to tell where each part comes from?
Yes, you can. There's distinct influx points that from both that are very distinct. You can tell where it's coming from.
Understood. Then I think you only have, lastly, two more questions if I may regarding this agreement. Make sure I can verbalize them appropriately. All right. There's in, in part three and part five, it discusses trash and excess trash. Obviously coming from off-site going into the facility and then being captured and then but it says excess off-site debris. Do we have any, any concerns as a town about how excess off-site debris trash is defined? We have concerns about that at all?
I don't. This facility itself traps the trash and collects it and will be removed for, for disposal. I guess what, I'm looking at paragraph five, it's speaking of excess off-site debris or trash. Let's go back to Jay's diesel fuel example. Let's say a trash truck turns over a Rowland's parking lot and that trash is coming down into the into, into the facility because it's raining. It says developer may give written notice to town if it discovers or believes that occurs. Then I think it'd be our responsibility to help out with cleaning that filter and getting rid of that trash.
I agree with that. I just, you know, whenever there's whenever, whenever, whenever there's interpretation involved, like excess, what means excess to me might not mean excess to you, might not mean excess to the next person. Whenever there's a squishy term like that, you know, I just, I'm a little wary. I mean, I support this agreement, don't get me wrong, but just know I, I'm a little wary when something is not fine. And so excess to you might be a little different to me. My final one is in number six. It's about a little bit more than halfway down. And it says, the town shall at its expense repair, restore, it's in condition, any improvements or natural features of the property that are disturbed. And continues on to inspect the facility. The facility was within the fifty feet spot in resort property. And so does shall imply that is, is there a way to inspect the facility without it costing the town? Because here, the expense repair and restoration becomes a town responsibility. So I'm wondering if we require as a town inspection, is the facility readily accessible in a manner where the damage, quote unquote, is minimal? Or are we looking at potential real significant cost here is my question.
This facility has the ability to be inspected, opened, and actually filters changed out of it periodically. That's its whole entire purpose and design. This paragraph six talks about if the town may inspect it and town has to give five days notice. And if the town desires to dig it up for some reason, I don't know why we'd ever dig it up, but if the town desires to, we have to repair and restore the ground back to its original condition. The, the hundred percent of the maintenance responsibility is on the developer and the county is responsible for ensuring they do the maintenance. So we're really not even a party to the agreement from an inspection and maintenance perspective. However, this paragraph six gives us the ability to go in if we need to, for some unknown reason. It's not maintained, it's not fixed, it's not whatever, and we decide we need to go in there and do something about it. We have the ability to do that.
If we pay for any sort of restoration costs that might be necessary or repair costs.
But again, typical maintenance of this filter requires no disturbance of the ground.
Okay, and so, and obviously you're comfortable with this and that makes me more comfortable with it.
Yes, I am.
Those are my questions is how you define debris and excess and any sort of potential expenses for the town of Chesapeake Beach that they'd be responsible for and proud of property. Those are my concerns. And my other one was answered about water going into the bay and if we have another like Hurricane Isabel, where the system becomes overwrought through no fault of its own. You know, hopefully nobody is held liable for that, you know, not the Chesapeake Beach Bottom Resort nor the town. You know what I mean? Like, you know, they control so much. So those are my comments and my questions and thank you.
Mr. Mayor, please, one follow-up comment?
Go ahead.
Thank you again. Well, Holly probably knows already that this is something that the town's going to need to put on their calendar, reminding, making sure that the county, whatever, how, whatever they require periodically to come out and inspect, that we check up on them and that they're doing that. Also, it seems to me that if if a trash truck flipped over on a Rowland's property and went down into the, the filter there and caused some problems for the owner back in there, that they should mitigate that with the Rowland's property owner that that, that's, that, that property owner's responsibility to ameliorate, not necessarily for the town to jump in there, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. MOU with the B O C C regarding the Highland sewer connection. Holly?
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I address something?
Sure.
Mr., a question came up with regard to the process with regard to those, those public works agreements. And basically, the signature by the town. So, so basically, the question came up, one is that obviously, you know, those agreements, in my opinion, should be reviewed by the town. But with the idea that, I'm assuming that the signature probably will be yours, Mr. Mayor, but some type of authority given for you to sign these. And that's what kind of the question was hanging out there was, you know, obviously the council should review these agreements, but you know, just, just, I mean, are you excited, are you, are you comfortable with saying, yes, I, I can assign, I can sign these now or, or some other type of vote or some type of idea or motion or just something, just, just some, some type of authority giving you a reason, the ability to sign.
Okay, well, A, 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 we don't vote tonight. It's been this administration's policy, not prior administrations, to provide the council with, with public works agreements, you know. I believe that the, I sat on the council for twenty years and I believe that the council should be reviewing these it happening, you know, alone. So I'm very comfortable with the council's input on this. I do have the authority as mayor to sign these. I'm, you know, like I said, I'm pretty much an open book on these public works agreements. I mean, if you, Todd, feel that it should be on the agenda to have the council approval on the agenda, that's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm good. This is, you know, this is too important a thing not to have the council involved.
No, and I, I agree with, I agree one hundred percent with the council, you know, involvement. I just and even, even tonight, tonight's a, it's not open to the public, but at the same time, it is a work session. And the work session, they could, if they chose, so really, to me, this is more of a council decision. You know, for your, for you signing it, I'm perfectly fine with that. I just want to make sure there was an idea of the process. Because, and I'll be candid, where this came up is the developer's attorney called me and said, I don't see any reason why this should even be, needs to be go before council. And I'm like, no, I don't think so. I think it needs to go before council and I think they have a right to, to take a look at and be aware of any agreement. But my question is, okay, once it goes before council, who signs it? And that, that was my only question of how that was brought up.
Okay, well, well, thank you. And one, you know, no matter what anybody asks or says, you know, as mayor, okay, I want the council and the town, and this is a public meeting, to be aware of any and all public works agreements. That's where I stand on that. I have since day one. So yes, under the, under the town code, I sign it and I do plan to, I, I plan to have staff, you know, review the input from council on these and I plan to sign it if, you know, once we incorporate what, what the council feels.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Is that, that's
Bottom of the
Very good. Yeah, MOU with the B O C C regarding the Highland sewer connection.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the, the town council has reviewed a draft MOU and the May Town Council meeting, we brought back some feedback to the county and have revised the MOU, which has really mitigated all of the concerns. I have a slide in front of you with the summary of the terms of the MOU. Basically, it is the town and county agreeing that the county would do the project. The town would partner by purchasing the county's taps at the county's tap rate, which is five thousand four hundred dollars for the forty lots within the town. The county would then start the project for the special tax district. And the town would bill the town citizens for their taps and their sewer use. So I, I think this is a great win for, for both the county and the town to get this project completed for the citizens that are desperately in need of it.
Thank you, Holly. And I'll take any comments from council, beginning with Dr. Bodine.
Well, yeah, thanks, Pat. So this was, my understanding is it was approved by the Highlands HOA. This is an extremely sensitive topic to remove them from septic to water and sewer both. And so I think this, the changes, I really appreciate those that got into the MOU. My one question, and it might actually be for Dell for once, is I noticed the recommendation down there is that it is recommended that the two hundred sixteen thousand dollars comes from the utility fund and I agree with that. And then the utility fund would be reimbursed as the payments come in from the forty residents. And so my, my question or my request is that during our next year and the year after and the year after budget, so that we don't lose sight of exactly what's going on here. If you think, if you think it's a good idea that we have in the revenues, a separate line item, now that we have line item budgeting. And then in the expenditures, we have line item budget. So it would almost look like we start off in the revenue for zero, obviously. And in the expenditures and that part of the utility fund, it would have two hundred sixteen thousand dollars. And using, looking at those two side by side, you can see the revenues coming in over time and see when they balance out. So that would be my request or my comment unless you have a, a problem with that, Dale.
Thank you. Charlie?
I don't have any questions. I just want to make two comments. First of all, this is a hugely important project for the environment as well as, I mean, it's just hugely important, the right thing to do. So I'm very excited about this. And I hear this, believe it or not, maybe just some of the people that I happen to know in town, but I hear, I hear from people in the Highlands on a regular basis. And so that leads to the, the one question I have, which is, assuming we execute this, what is the timing? When will they sort of break ground, as it were? And what's the timing on someone, you know, the first person, well, I was going to make a joke, but I'll just say the first person connected. You know, is it five years? Is it three years? What's the sense?
That's a good question. I think that all relies on how quickly the county can move forward with that special tax district. So they have to hold a hearing at the county level and talk with the, the citizens of the community about the costs that will be incurred. And I don't, do not have a good answer for you on when they would be able to break ground. But I think with the approval of signing off on this MOU, we could definitely get a good timeline from the county. And I can share that with you.
That, yeah, I would, I would love to have that, even if, you know, it's uncertain, maybe a bulleted list of these steps you just mentioned to keep us posted on that. And then I can, any of us can sound reasonably intelligent when someone asks us about it.
Sure, absolutely.
Be excited about this for sure.
Yes. Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
I remember in our earlier discussion, we were hearing that there were some homeowners in the towns portion of Highlands that were concerned, you know, they had apparently just invested money in their septic systems or whatever. They were not interested in connecting to public sewer. I presume we've dealt with that and they will have to connect. Correct?
Yes, it was, the special tax district for this project was ninety-nine percent of the community. So we have not heard from any town citizens that are disputing this connection. All of the citizens have reached out in favor.
Right. One observation you have in here about what the county's reserve capacity is at the plant of three hundred and two thousand, three twenty-five. And when I look at these numbers, when this gets connected, their estimated flows are going to go to about two hundred thousand. So they'll be about two-thirds of their reserve capacity, just something that we might want to share with them. So they're got a heads up. And then the last thing, and I don't know if Jay's on here anymore, but he and I talked about this, that I was thinking it'd be a good idea if we can install a, a meter in the sewer coming from the county's portion of this development, so we have a more accurate measurement of their flows.
I, I am here, Larry, and I, I did capture that. They haven't submitted any partial plan yet. As soon as we get this signed, I think they're going to go into a developed plan. I think they need this done first.
Okay, because I remember, Jay, you actually had a meter in mind that could get installed.
Say that again, Larry. I didn't hear that last part.
Yeah, as I remember, Jay, you actually had a meter in mind that we might install as part of this.
Correct. A, a type of meter, yes.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Councilman Morris?
Yes, sir. I did have a bunch of questions. I'll just try to boil it down to most viable comments. Holly, so we don't know from the county yet their timeline for forming the special tax district?
Do not, but I will certainly update you as soon as I know.
First note there, okay. I guess that it kind of is the next step there. I had a question regarding this project, though. This, this is for the sewer main. This is not, this doesn't include actual branch lines out and config, reconfiguring some of those houses to be able to gravity feed or put lift pumps in to get them from the individual dwellings. This is just for the main line to come through. There may be some restrictions or regarding having to connect. I'm not really sure on all of that, but the cost to connect the mains to the, to the various private houses there, is that something the county's paying for a hundred percent or are we not there yet?
We're not there yet. That, that will be defined in the special tax district. So all of those costs will be reviewed at that time.
Okay, very good. Incidentally, I thought it was good work. Generally speaking, I, I'm in favor of this. I just have some, a few questions. Is, do we know if the county's requiring everybody outside of the town limits to connect?
Yes, in the Highlands.
Right, okay, in the Highlands, yeah. And that, and those costs will be captured and, okay, I got you. Let me see, my fourth item. I want, one comment I wanted to make. I think our current tie-in fees right now are around twenty-two and a half thousand. We're purchasing, we're purchasing from the county, the county's rate, and it's kind of their prerogative, I guess, to set their own rate there. I don't have any issues with that. And I see it as an emergency situation. I'm just thinking down the road, I wouldn't want somebody to use these efforts as a means to say, okay, well, precedence was set, why do I have to pay twenty-two and a half thousand to connect? When these houses over here only had to pay five and a half thousand more or less. We know there's a special tax district, district and more costs involved. Again, it's an emergency situation. You'd be comparing apples and oranges, you know, the emergency situation versus a for-profit developer. The, in item, in paragraph nine, the last sentence in parag, in paragraph nine, I don't know if you want to scroll down, but it says, town residents should pay all other fees related to the project. That word should, should that be changed to shall?
Makes sense to me.
Just, just an observation. I know that I've learned over the last nine months that that word shall is a powerful word.
You can, the mayor of Ocean City would agree with you totally.
All right, my, my last comment really is on the very last page, is the signature page. And someone, I don't know, I guess, the president of the county commissioners, Earl Kansas, signed this. And it's approved by their county attorney, but it's not notarized. Does that mean that they're gonna have, this is really not the final, final document that they're gonna sign?
This is the final, but they're waiting for the town to execute it before they put it before the county commissioners to officially sign off on it.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, Derek?
I know, Holly, you said it best. This is really a win for everyone involved, town, county, residents. So I definitely agree with that. And then I want to commend the town on their willingness to ease some of the cost burden for the town residents by purchasing the, the county taps at their rate. So I do want to commend the town for that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Public Works vehicle purchase. Holly?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have a situation that we wanted to review at town council in regards to the purchase of a public works vehicle. This is a budgeted item. However, each time public works receives an estimate for the truck that they want to purchase, it's gone the next day. So inventory, as you know, is very low. So we wanted to speak with town council about potentially a not to exceed amount, knowing that we would have to purchase the vehicle very quickly. We are looking at multiple different vendors. So we would have a competitive pricing structure and Jay can speak to the specifics of the truck that we're looking for as well.
Sure. Thank you, Holly. And I'm sure most of you are aware, or maybe not as aware, but trucks are very short right now and in demand. So we've done the same thing, reached out for three bids. And when I call back, you know, we've, we've tried locally, Wine Gardner, Prince Frederick Ford, Sports Chevrolet, different areas, literally the same day when I call back, someone came and paid cash for that truck and they're gone. So I've had the opportunity and they will hold a truck for one day. But every dealership has been honest with me and said, if you're not here to get it at the end of the day, it'll be gone tomorrow. And so far, they've been right. So just like Holly said, I would still get three quotes. We would still be competitive, but trucks are just not lasting. We're looking to replace the 10-year-old truck that's currently an F-350. I can't even find an F-350. We're looking at some F-250s. We're also looking at some comparable GMC 2500s at Wine Gardner. So it's very much gonna be the same truck you see up and down the road, eight-foot bed, capable of snow plowing and salt shredder. We just, just having problems with our usual process of getting free quotes and bringing them to council because these vehicles aren't lasting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Derek, I'll start with you.
Well, under the circumstances, this is a very logical approach and, and I, I would certainly recommend approving this.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
In support of Jay's recommendation, thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, Jay, what kind of prices had you been getting?
So we're budgeted at 45 and the last one that was at Apple Ford, we were able to get a 250 four-wheel drive, eight-foot bed, three-quarter ton for just under 40,000, which was perfect. It already had the snowplow wiring harness that someone had actually ordered and they didn't come through. So I'm thinking we can definitely get it under budget. We're just gonna have to be quick on, you know, there are some of these fleet trucks and government piggyback deals where some big entities have backed out of their commitment. And sometimes they have 20 trucks, Apple Ford had 20 trucks and they all sold within 48 hours.
Yeah, I was just asking a question because when we set this not to exceed price, we want to make sure it's high enough to, to cover any additional price increases as we go forward. Thank you.
And I appreciate that. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, Larry. Charlie?
I certainly support you guys doing this. I would support this even at a broader level for other things. I mean, you, you guys know the business certainly better than, than we do. So if there's not to exceed amounts, I support that 100%.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Valerie?
Yeah, Larry hit right upon my question. I wasn't sure if the 45,000 was gonna be enough. My only suggestion is Jay, get what you need. And don't worry about it, but if you find that the price is also going up to like 48,000, you know, let us know what you need the next town council meeting to make this happen. And it can be a not to exceed.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Before I begin the lightning round, there's something I, I want to say. I want to go ahead and just, you know, one last time, thank Councilman Bevray for his service to, to the town. He's, he's been an extraordinary person to, to work with. I've always found Derek to be very fair. Very honorable man and with a strong sense of duty. And I have to say, many, many a person would have begged off this last meeting, seeing as that was their last one, but not Derek. He, he, he knows he's getting highly paid by the town of Chesapeake Beach, so he wasn't gonna miss a meeting. And so, thank you, Derek. And with that, I'll, I'll give it to Valerie. Council lightning round.
Okay, and I echo everything Pat said. Derek, you know how I feel. It's been an absolute pleasure working with you. You'll be extremely missed, not just by me, but by the town of Chesapeake Beach. It's been a blessing to have you around. For the lightning round, I just want to say I'm still not totally clear on what's gonna happen with that tax zoning amendment. Maybe Chris is clear. I don't know if it's gonna be, can be for town council, if it's gonna go back to planning zoning to be part of the larger package, potentially, of what they come up with, with the comprehensive plan, planning and zoning map and the tax amendment. So I had no clarity on where we kind of like left that. So maybe if anyone else does, you can email me or whatever about what the next step with that is. I'd hate for it to be lost into the ether. And there's some fun, quick announcements. The 17th Street Rock Garden, the retaining wall was, was repaired by the town and the Green Team will be doing the planting on Sunday, September 19th. And what I want to do is I want to give a loud, a very loud shout out to Windmill Farms, who has worked hand in hand with Holly and with Melanie of the Green Team. And they are donating a lot of plants for this, between the fence and the, and the retaining wall. It's gonna look lovely and I cannot thank Windmill Farms enough. Their gift to us is phenomenal. So that will be, that work will be done on September 19th at 10 a.m. And then we have the paddle and pathway pickup in cooperation with the Green Team and Cover County Parks and Rec Northeast Canadian Center. That was Erica Love and that'll be September 25th. It's our annual fall cleanup event. Only this time we're encouraging people to bring their kayaks and news and clean up that way. It'll be a lot of fun and there'll be no cost to launch your kayak or canoe. And finally, this weekend, if you're out and about, you may have the pleasure of noticing the new signs, informational signs on the railway trail that should be up by then. They were purchased and the Green Team will be putting them up. And a special thanks to Larry and Sue for pre-drilling them and also helping with Linda to put those signs up. So hopefully they'll be out this weekend. And that's all I have. And once again, thank you, Derek.
Thank you. Charlie?
First of all, welcome back, everyone. Hope summer vacation was nice for all. I know I'm happy to be back, although I'm not happy to be back on Zoom. Business-wise, we have a walkable community meeting on the 20th of September. We're anxious to get regroup, I guess, and, and follow up on a number of our projects. I've been in touch with Holly on status of things that have already been turned over to the town. So we'll be looking for some status updates as that meeting approaches and also next steps. And lastly, I want to say that echo Derek, we're gonna miss you. We're gonna miss you on our committee. So I certainly wish you all the best, both professionally and personally. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Thank you. One is, you already see on the screen, and thank you, Holly, for posting it on the town website about the commemoration of September 11th on Saturday. So just listen for the bells from Union Church tolling. Second is just unfortunately Taste the Beaches was supposed to have been a week from this Saturday, but hopefully we'll get back on schedule next year. Third, I just wanted to make everyone aware that the Chesapeake Beach Railway Museum has reopened. It has been totally renovated inside. It is completely different. If you were in there before, they've taken a lot of the stuff out of there that was being used as storage, created some great displays. There's a railroad that the kids can operate, model railroad. There's interactive displays. So if you have a chance, stop by sometime. Or just again, Derek, good luck to you, buddy, and hope we have a chance to get together sometime for beverage in the future. And five, happy birthday, Irish. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few comments, Derek, too. I wanna, I want to thank you, Derek. We'll miss you more than we know. And I'm a better councilman because of you. And because of you leaving, I have a lot of growing to do. So thank you for that. I wanted to thank Sharon and staff and Holly of putting together. It's been a great meeting. I appreciate the work session. We covered some important ground this evening. Third, and not least, and I'm vaccinated, I'm planning on getting the booster shot when I can. I have not had the pleasure to experience COVID. I have not had it. You not want to experience it. So everybody, please be safe. We've got a ways to go, but we've got to march through and continue to assimilate in our society again. We just want to be cautious. Thanks.
Thank you, Greg. I echo your sentiments. And Derek?
Well, thank you, everyone, for the very kind words. I do appreciate that and it really has been my pleasure working not only with, but for everyone in, in, in town. This has been a very enjoyable ride for me, a lot of hard work, a lot of great collaboration, but it's been very rewarding and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't change it for anything. I think I said that last time. You guys, well, all of you, mayor, council, staff, volunteers, I mean, you're, you're not gonna have a bigger fan and supporter than me moving forward. I may, I may check in from time to time, may even pop in on a meeting just to say hi. But I, you know, I may be gone, but I, I definitely want to keep tabs on this. A lot of great work that we've started and some we've accomplished. And I know there's a lot more to come. And again, I want to be a fan and observer for that. I really wish you all the best moving forward. Congratulations to Larry. I'm, I'm confident your, your next year as council vice president, you'll do a fantastic job. And then whoever succeeds you next year will equally do a fantastic job. So I, I can't say enough for this group. We've been together for five years and, you know, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't trade any of you in the experience that we've had. You've, you've all been fantastic to work with and, and I will miss you all. And I just want to thank especially the staff. We have a fantastic staff, starting with you, Holly, at the top and, and everyone underneath. I mean, it was such a fantastic group of, you know, the, you know, they, they hear us, the town hears us twice a month. But, you know, they, they don't necessarily see what they have, you know, data, what's going on day to day and all the work that you guys do to, to better this town and provide the, the services that they need to live their lives. And we, we've got the best and I, you know, you guys need to be commended and and praised more than you do. So thank you all. And again, it's been a pleasure working with all of you. So with that, Mr. Mayor, can I make the motion to adjourn?
I wish you would give us the honor to do so.
All right, move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Aye.
Thanks, Derek. See you, Derek.
Take care, everybody.
See you, buddy.
Bye, Derek.